I'd like to call the August 19th, 2024 special meeting of the City Council and Finance Advisory Committee to order, noting the absence of Mayor Barnes. I'd ask for a motion to appoint a temporary chair for this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Who would you like to appoint?
Uh, who did it last time? Larson?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, do it again.
And who was the second?
Second.
All those in favor of appointing Alderman Larson as temporary chair of this meeting, indicate by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carried. Alderman Larson, Larson, you may proceed.
Okay, Ruth, would you, um, roll call?
For City Council.
Yes, for the City Council, yes, sorry.
Zazada, Larson.
Here.
Smith, Perkins.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes. Five present.
And then Ruth, would you, um, call the roll for the Finance Advisory Committee?
Babcock.
Here.
Calligan.
Here.
I'm sorry, Callahan.
Callahan was right.
Oh, what?
Calligan.
Thank you. Neely.
Here.
Terazinski. There are only three Finance Advisory Committee members present, therefore they do not have a quorum and will not be able to participate in this meeting.
Okay, we'll move forward then. Um, for City Council, are there any amendments to the agenda? Could I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Okay, motion carries. Um, public partation, participation, we have on Mr. Shavat, um, three minutes.
Noting that Mayor Barnes has now missed three meetings in the last few months, two in a row, so I guess his absence tonight and the absence of Mr. Smith, Mrs. Zazada, and majority of the Finance Advisory Commission is extremely problematic because what's being discussed tonight?
Hey, Mike, can you hold on one second? Does, can we get the timer on?
It's not running, yeah.
We'll start it again, please.
Yeah, there you go.
Be helpful, thank you. All right. I find it very problematic that the city manager is placing blame regarding the budget woes on the state over DeKalb's increasing pension liabilities. This council has rubber stamped the city manager's hiring bonanza to the tune of about 12.2% new full-time employees since 2022. Have any of you looked at the census figures? DeKalb population has declined and initial estimates show a further downward trend, so this hiring bonanza makes no sense. It is the cause of the budget shortfall. The DeKalb will face a huge structural budget issue because the city hired too many first responders over too short of a period of time. Now, I posed this dilemma at recent war meetings with Carolyn Zazada, John Walker, Mike Verbic, and Andre. You'll get the question next Wednesday, so I'm looking forward to your solution as well. Uh, Calligan, Mr. Calligan, Finance Committee member, was also in attendance at Carolyn's meeting, did not have an answer to this issue as well. I've asked, what is our plan to pay for all these new police and fire hires? There has not been a peep from city officials, elected officials, or the city manager on how to fund these new lucrative salaries, benefits, and pensions that go along with these positions. Now, all I hear is safety first. Now, that's fine, we all want that, but how do we pay for this? I've asked this question on how do we fill the loss of the federal ARPA money as well that's going to disappear in 2025. I've asked that question. What, what about the Safer Grant? Combined loss of nearly $2 million. Our mayor constantly bangs the drum about lowering taxes. It doesn't take a genius to crunch the numbers and determine the city does not have a revenue problem, it has a spending problem. Also of note is the forecast increase of 1.5 million in sales and use taxes that seem too high for our circumstances, reduced inflation, continuing stagnant NIU enrollment, yet these numbers go unexplained. Is this due to Cohen Barnes, Bill Nicholas' Hatch plan to thrust a 1% grocery tax that has yet to been discussed by the Finance Advisory Committee, also the quarter percent proposed sales tax, and the 2 cent a gallon gasoline tax that are on the books? It's also worth noting, in the backup, that the discussion of lowering the property tax rate by 2%, which sounds lovely, but you factor that in with the 14.6% equalization factor, a record increase not seen in 20 years, that will mean a 12% property tax increase for every DeKalb homeowner with the 2% reduction. I'd like to get an answer to this question, preferably without the city manager referring to me as that character like he did at the last meeting. Thank you.
Just for some clarity for people who might be watching and different things, two of the Alder people had serious medical issues, and that is why they're not here today. They are not, not just showing up, so I just want to clarify that. Um, considerations, consideration of key assumptions for the fiscal year 2025 city budget. I ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker. City Manager.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. Good evening to the FAC as well. Uh, this time of the year for the last five years, at least, we have done a, I guess you would say, a rehearsal of where we might be in October as we're beginning to pull together detail. Can you hear me all right?
Uh-huh.
Great detail that ultimately finds its way into the budget document that you're familiar with and which we'll talk about again with the FAC in mid-October and then with the council through a couple of different meetings for review and revision if necessary and approval. And in this process, as, as you know, and I'm gonna spend a lot of time on this, it's not just the city manager's prognostications. There's a lot of background work that's done. Uh, we look at year-on-year totals and, and comparisons. Uh, the people sitting in the back of the room, all of which have a role in creating department budgets. Uh, also Susan Hauman, who is our Finance Director, who is, is very much involved with me in preparing, uh, the drafts of the, the early passes at what we feel will be our, our revenue picture, particularly on the operating side, which is what we spend most of this meeting on, and also implications for the capital side. So, uh, my, my hand is off to the help that is there readily and, and at your disposal and mine as well throughout the year, but especially in the months from the time that the audit numbers are presented to you in late June until this point in mid to late August. So let's begin with, with revenues, and I, I hope to address, uh, some questions that you have posed to me and, and other questions as we go through this. If at any point you feel, uh, you'd like, like to, um, add a comment or, or inject a question, I'm happy, I'll just stop. Please do interrupt. Happy to be interrupted. So I, I will say one thing, and I say this caveat every year, I wish that we knew more about where we stand right now and where we might be. This is the best we can do with what we know. Uh, state shared revenues usually come in two to three months after they're incurred, and that means that right now we're, we're looking at best at May numbers, uh, and that was a different time. If some of you are following financial news on, whether it's on a, a network channel or on one of the, the financial streaming news services, uh, you know that a lot of things, um, have, have filled the air since, since, uh, early May. Uh, we were looking at a, a very soft landing, and then, then people were falling over themselves and say, oh, we missed the soft landing, it's gonna be somewhat hard landing, and now we're back to maybe soft landing. Um, and so at the national level and international level, there's, there's enough to fill every night's newscasts with detail and data, uh, and at our level, uh, we go with what we have based, as I said, on some, some information that could change tomorrow as we get, get, uh, state mandates, or, excuse me, state warrants. So here we are. Let's begin with, if you go to page two in your background, you'll see the, the major general operating revenues, and I'm gonna spend a little, just a little bit of time on those. Uh, the chart that we created for you a couple of years ago, I've, I've used again this year, and that breaks out our, both our property taxes, our sales and use taxes, grocery receipts taxes, the largest of which is municipal utility taxes, uh, other income, uh, also the state shared rev, state income tax, which is part of intergovernmental revenue, and these categories together make up, uh, seven out of every $10 that we get for our general operating, and that, uh, revenue is, as we sit here tonight, our best guess is, is not quite $36 million. And our projection is, uh, basically fifty, call it 51 million that will need to cover expenses that we have projected, which I'll get to in a few minutes. Uh, the property taxes that you levy, um, it was decided a number of years ago that those, those taxes would be used to, uh, offset our obligations to the state pension funds, the two pension funds, not IMRF, not Social Security, which have to come out of other sources. Used to, once upon a time, uh, when property tax could, could be used for those purposes, but no more. And in fact, if you look on the top of page three, you can see that in addition to every property tax dollar that we receive, and, and what I projected for, for next year is the amount that is required by our actuary. That's the third column in, it says actuarial required contribution, which is about 10 and a half million. Uh, our total levy, this is a very rough proposal at this point. Uh, there's, there's a lot more information we need to get from the county before we come forward with a firm proposal, but just putting this in here as, as, as a placekeeper, you can see we're at about 8.3 million in what we could pull out of the levy. Uh, the, the pension costs, uh, from 24 to FY '24 to FY '25, that's, that's what we're talking about here, fiscal years, are up just in the last 12 months by over 2 million. Uh, the levy that is proposed here for conversational purposes is up 670, not quite 618,000, so about 30% of that actually comes out of the property tax, so, uh, that's proposed here. Uh, and I, I want to hasten to add that the, uh, the city's EAV, final EAV, or proj, final projected EAV is not anywhere close to being solid at this point. That's gonna happen sometime toward the end of September, early October. October 1st is usually the, the point at which the township assessors are to submit their, their EAV estimates to the, the county supervisor of assessments. So, a key, a key number. Uh, at this point, we're guessing that, uh, of, of the several considerable industrial companies to our south, Meta in particular, we're looking at a little over $100 million in new EAV. Uh, most of the other EAV increases will come, aside from the, the multiplier, which is estimated right now at about 14.6%, and that may hold. It's not final yet, but that's likely what it's going to be. Uh, most of the other EAV increases have come from some small housing starts, and that is, um, that's good news for us. We'll have more houses built in, in DeKalb this year than we have in, in, in recent memory, but the, each house comes in, say, it's 250 to 350, uh, 250,000 to 350,000, depending on the ups and extras, uh, particularly those that are being built right now in the Knowles, and, uh, that, that doesn't move the needle anything like the, the Meta development currently. Uh, the, uh, the tax levy being totally dedicated toward the, the unfunded liabilities, which we have talked about many times here and talked about again at some length back in April when we had our strategic meeting. Uh, those, those liabilities are indeed increasing, uh, not just because of the persons that we have added in recent years, but also because there is an inflationary factor in these pension costs, and people are living longer, and that's a good thing, and they're enjoying their retirement. Uh, the overall unfunded liability that the city has is, is in excess of $105 million. And we're in the middle of the pack, better than many in the state of Illinois, but, uh, and I couldn't resist, uh, and I'll keep saying as long as I'm your city manager, that the, the fiduciary responsibility that we have, uh, we, we took on some decades ago when the state, uh, released their, their sense of responsibility, but at some point, there's got to be a, a common ground found, uh, not only in the shares that local and state, uh, bodies will be sharing, but also in how that, that obligation is going to be calculated. And what we have now is a closed system, and we've talked about that at length, uh, before, uh, and I'll only go into that if you want to, but in effect, what we're doing is, uh, and you've heard this many times, if we, um, likened it to getting your credit card bill and you have a choice to pay $2,000 to clean it off, or, uh, $55 to pay the interest, or $155, whatever it might be, we're basically paying interest because, as you can see, that the amount, the principal goes up. So, uh, I'll, I'll leave that for now, but I, I think it's important to note that only 30% of what might be considered our pension obligation increase, uh, this year would be offset by property tax. The rest would have to be offset by sales and use taxes, and you can see what's happening with those on the chart on page two. Uh, at the, at the rate we're going, if we hire nobody else, uh, and, and there are, um, limits to where we're going to be set by the council in terms of, of recent collective bargaining org, uh, agreements and also plans that we've had in, in the work for three or four years, uh, you see a table on page four, which shows our fund balance diminishing in an arc that is not a friendly one. Now, what about the individual property taxpayers in our community? Uh, persons who own homes and persons who own productive property and businesses and the rest? Uh, if you look at, uh, the bottom of page four in your background, a lot of charts and graphs in this background today, uh, you see where we are, where, where we were and where we are now in relation to, uh, competitors, mostly to the east of us, and I think it's, it's important to note that, that the progress, the net reduction in the last, uh, five tax years has been just under 20, 20% in the aggregate, and the city frankly has led the way there. Every year, we've, we've gone deeper, but one that I can think of, of any of the taxing bodies. Uh, and, um, what's, what's proposed for the next year, as I say, is, is something that we'll grapple with in, in October, and I'm anxious to see, talked to county officials today, uh, it's just too early to put a number on the, the community EAV estimate. So, uh, any questions so far? All right. Let's go to state sales tax and home roll sales tax. Uh, the, the proposed bumps here are not wishful at all. Uh, you have to go back and look at, uh, what happened in, in '23. Uh, we had a very significant surplus from, uh, underestimated revenues and, uh, uh, overestimated expenditures. We saved a million on the expenditure side from the, the prudence of our department heads, and, uh, about $5 million more was earned last year for our general fund than was predicted. I like to shoot low, uh, but so the increase is to bring us in line with the trend of the last three years, and that has not been a perfect line because the world has not been in a perfect arc, but, uh, just looking at averages and again estimating, I think, in a prudent way, we are where we are in the state and so, uh, sales and use taxes, uh, because of, of actual year-on-year and month-on-month projections. Yes?
Alderman Walker.
All right, sir, so, and trust me, I just need to understand it a little bit better because, uh, you know these numbers better than me, and I didn't get to bug you this week. Sorry, I was at a funeral, so I don't want it to act like I'm coming off, you know, like I normally do, but, so the only thing that I'm not understanding, and I know you can help me with it, is, okay, back to the taxes, like the 14% multiplier, I just, I mean, I'm not the best with numbers, but I just don't understand, or how will we be
How is that calculated?
Yeah, like, or how we would be able to, like, lower the tax burden at all on taxpayers?
Well, it, it's more challenging with the equalization factor going up, so how, how is that even determined? Well, it's not determined by the city, it's determined by the township assessor, but it's in line with state statute.
Right.
Which is that you take the last three fiscal years, or in this case levy years, and you average what the percentage increase was in the sale price of properties in the city of DeKalb. Now, some people have said, oh, we got too much industrial stuff going on. Well, most of that land was bought five years ago, it's not even in, in the equation anymore. Uh, what's happening is, a lot of people, it's a seller's market for houses, has been for two years, continues to be, not quite as much as last year, but almost everybody's selling a house for more than they thought they would three years ago, and more than they thought a year ago, and that is the percentage increase, so it's not, it's a cruel and, and unwavering, uh, formula. It doesn't matter whether it's 500,000 for a house, or a million five, or, or 150,000, that is the percentage, and as you calculate that over time and over the, the body of homes sold, and I'm not just talking about new homes, there were, there were four or five times as many homes just sold, existing homes, to somebody moving into the community, or maybe somebody who's already here and wanted to move up. So add all that together, you got about 150, 200. I, I don't have it in front of me, and, and the township assessor will, will, uh, have that information, but at the end of this, uh, uh, summer and into the fall, but we, I, I have talked to our assessor, and, and I know that, that is why it's 14.6. It was, uh, just under 10 last year, and the year before that was about 6.7, and before that, it was down about 3. That was the COVID year, and, and, but still a little bit of a bump. So that's where we are, and you know what that means, because it's a three-year average, that means next year, if we keep on about the same pace, but let's say there's a softening in the number of homes sold and in the average price, it's still gonna be pretty high. It might be back to where it was in '23, but I, we can't at this point project that accurately. Does that make sense to you? Okay. Did that, was that, did that answer your question?
Hey, I love learning. I love learning, yeah.
Okay, uh, municipal utility tax, we are, we are seeing some, uh, some increase. Uh, naturally, the, the more buildings that are electrified, uh, south of Gerler, uh, the, the greater the tax. We split that 50/50, but, uh, that's an enormous amount that is generated, and, uh, we, we will continue to see some modest increases in the years ahead as a result of that. Uh, state income tax, we use the municipal league's per capita estimate. Uh, this year was close to $176 per capita, uh, and that was higher, uh, I would say a couple of years ago, it was around 172.5, uh, and that shows that in the last, probably, two fiscal years, we, we, we are still seeing, uh, some jobs increased in our area and, and wages and, and salaries, uh, overall in the gross, increasing. I might just add, before we lose, uh, track of the, this, and I suppose it's the tip of the hat to Meta, that this, this chart on page five, if you go to the middle of the page roughly, this is just one, one company's impact on the local taxable value, the EAV. Paul and I were in a meeting, they and Brian made a reference to this, but here it is in detail. Uh, this is just over two years. In '21, there was, there was a Meta, uh, tax obligation, but it, it was substantially lower, say, under 20 million overall. Uh, in '23, it was $197 million of EAV, against which our rates were, were charged, and in the aggregate, what, what happened is that Meta in 2023 paid 11 million, almost 11.1 million dollars in taxes to our local taxing bodies. Obviously, the largest was the school district at 7.1 million, county at 1.1 million, the city of DeKalb just over a million, and uh, that's an increase of 8 million over '22. So you see, the total is extraordinary, uh, and, uh, it, it's unlike anything that was imagined four or five years ago. All right. Those are the major revenue streams. Before I get into expenditures, any questions? Okay.
Bill?
Yes?
You mentioned the, the need for work at the state level on the pensions.
Uh-huh.
And something there. Uh, but what about anything that's happening related to the shift of more hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles away from the gasoline tax?
Yeah, there, there's that, and also, Paul, the, uh, you know, what's, what's happening just in terms of users and the rates that apply. So, um, there was high hopes, uh, two years ago, that the, the trend, which was up in terms of new usage of, of EV vehicles and, and so forth, that would continue, and, and it would become a ramp that was, would skyrocket, and as you know, that's not happened. There are some major, uh, participants in, in the production of EV vehicles. Ford is one, they're not, they're not alone, uh, where , uh, the sales have flattened or actually receded significantly. Uh, some of that has to do with the cost, uh, some of that has to do with the, the, how the vehicles are produced. Uh, they, the production actually involves a lot of energy, and, uh, in order to have the payoff over time of less energy being used in the vehicles. Uh, so I, I don't presume to be the expert in that, but, uh, it's certainly something I've been following, I know you've been following, and it's, uh, I, I don't, I think the early estimates of, of a sort of a, a land rush, a, a breakaway speed, uh, were overstated, but we didn't know that at the time. It seemed with some early, people were, were mortgage, remortgaging their homes so they could get a nice EV vehicle. It's not happening so much anymore.
City Manager?
Just, just for clarity, can people from the FAC, can they ask questions?
Well, they have standing because the, the meeting was, has, has historically been developed so that they can speak. It, it would be, it would be, in my opinion, it's your call. Uh, it, it would, it would be rude and, and, uh, and not helpful to, uh, say, you've come here, you planned to be here, uh, and you can't participate. It's up to you. Uh, it's not binding, we're not taking any votes tonight.
We're not voting on anything. Okay, okay, so.
But it's your call.
It's a primary violation.
Should say the, well, no, I'm not.
So our call is as the council, as this members up here, or me personally?
Well, the council can, uh, in this case, it's, it's not a hearing. Uh, it's, it's typically a workshop, except it's an open meeting. We've, we've invited another body to come in and join us. come in and join us. They weren't able to fill the quorum. You were. If you want to ask a question of somebody in the audience who has standing, you can ask them to go up to the podium and ask a question.
I don't have a problem with that, because of people.
Okay, sounds good.
I value their opinions.
Okay, okay, just for clarity. So, I guess, as long as it's a question for clarity, I'm okay with that as well. Thank you.
So, other questions on revenue? All right. We're on...
I do have one, but before we move on from the pension thing, and I don't know that we'll ever move on from the pension thing, I think it's going to linger for quite some I'm frustrated with the support we're getting from the state. I don't think they either, either they don't care about our opinions, or they're moving on to something else that they think is more important to them. What can we do to increase influence with them so that they understand the implication that it's having on our community? And not trying to avoid any liability, we have to cover our liability, we have to cover what the actuaries say we have to cover. I get that. But their ambivalence to address the issue is frustrating, you know, because we wrestle with this, I wrestle with this for years here, and I'm sure we're going to again. And they recognize there's an issue, and from my opinion, I'll get up on my soapbox here a little bit, they recognize there's an issue, but they recognize there are votes at stake for them, and they don't really, I don't believe they want to do anything. So, what can we do to get some attention?
Well, we've talked about this a little bit, and I'm happy to return to this now. There are some very large groups that are financially and legally invested, and vested in the outcome, to name the key. The Illinois Municipal League, which represents about 1,200 cities and villages and towns from Chicago to some of the smallest villages in the state. So, anyone, any one of those that have investments relating to those two pension programs obviously has an interest. Also, the two pension funds themselves, which after some state statutory changes about three years ago, there are now two large funds, the police pension fund and the fire pension fund statewide, which have the assets of all the hundreds of smaller pension boards around the state. Now, we still have pension boards in DeKalb and in all the other states. Their role is not to invest their investable funds that are under their care, but now it's been reduced to making pension decisions, no small thing, dealing with the questions about pensions that may arise from some of their pensioners that they represent. So, that, so those are vested parties. The state legislature is the biggest and the most amorphous, not necessarily representing any one of those groups. But what we need to do is have representation at the table, I don't know how big and round or square or what shape this table is going to be, but we have to get from a fiscal system to another fiscal system, and that's no small thing. And it's going to be based on some very highly technical information. We'll have to engage in, we, meaning, I'm just projecting, that these parties together, once they agree to find their way to the table, then we have to bring in actuarial experts who can spin models. Now, there are models out there. What we have is a closed system, which means basically that everyone's going to die in 2040 right now, and the legislature has thought about extending it to 2050. That truly is the kicking of the can down the road. It makes some difference in the short run, it only adds, if you, and I've done this and I've done it with our actuary, it actually only increases our unfunded obligations in those next 10 years. Because you're just spreading your cost out, right? And there's interest every year, whether you like it or not, for the next 10 years, and then some of that is principal, too. All right. So, we have to get some people in there, and even our actuary, and we did some work, paid some, I think, 6,000, not a big number, in 2023, do a pension modeler. So, it would be an Excel spreadsheet that would show us, if you plug in this amount of money and you want to pay a little more, what would that look like at the end of the year? And we did that, but that doesn't solve the problem, it just shows under the current system, if you want to throw money at it, this is what it will mean to you, and what your gain will be, and the gain wasn't much. And what we could, compared to what we could put at it, and the, what it would gain us, it didn't seem like we alone would make any difference in that process. So, that's a long-winded answer, but it's a big problem, but it's got vested interests, and nobody has the desire, I assume, to see these funds go bankrupt, where they're not funded enough to provide for their state statutory obligation to the pensioners, who are the beneficiaries of those monies that they have contributed over time as they've been earning, and then as we continue and they continue to donate over time after retirement. So, look at, I mean, we're sitting here, it's hard to even know where to begin, but we have to begin somewhere. And my thought was, maybe we, the city of DeKalb, who've been talking about this, who is in a position with tremendous transformational growth?
Right.
And seeing it being consumed in a way which is not, it's not fiscally wise, and it seems irresponsible at this stage, now that we see what this system yields. So, I think, I suggested in our meeting in April, I think we could think about making a substantial contribution to hiring somebody, just to, somebody's got to put their foot in the water here and see if we can get the wheels moving in some direction.
And I guess as we're looking ahead into 2025, and I know we talked about that at the planning session, what are, what would be, is that something we can address in the coming year?
Yes.
To put some meat on the bone there and say, we're really going to try and do something to improve the recognition by those folks that something needs to be done. Because we're going down, if you look at these numbers, we're going down a path where it's going up huge every year.
So, Mayor Barnes is on the board now of the IML, which gives us a voice in their monthly meetings and in their committee meetings, and that's good. But he's only been on the board for about a year, and he's getting to know people, and they're getting to know about the city of DeKalb, and the city of DeKalb's issue, which is not uncommon, as we've talked. I am concerned, though, with all of the bubbling that we're creating here in the little DeKalb, that there was not even a shell bill that was introduced in the spring session that we just passed, that was done at the end of May, to even get to 2050.
And you noted that in the backup, and that's one of the things that frustrated me, is we're talking to and trying to influence whoever we can try and influence, but they're not even doing anything with it.
Well, we do have allies...
They're moving on to other important things, and meanwhile, at the local level, we've got big issues we've got to deal with.
So, I will say this, and I'm grateful for this, we have allies, and the Associated Firefighters of Illinois have heard our position and have talked about this same proposition of figuring out, because we have to bring in these other parties, there's police and pensioners and the pension board, and the state of Illinois, we need some crackerjack committee to work on this. But they're willing to stand with us, and to do that, a lot of the conversation it's going to take to get people to the table is going to come, they're going to be involved in, long before we are, because they're working on these issues statewide all the time. So, I'm grateful, they've shown interest, they've seen our numbers, I presented twice over the last four years to their annual convention to talk about it, not in an adversarial way, but in a professional way, to say, these are the facts, we take your pensioners seriously, we also take our obligations seriously, but we need to get bigger help to do that. Does that make any sense?
It does. I'd just like to, I'd like to do something to get some traction on it in 2025, and I think now, as we're starting to work through and build assumptions, I think now's the, for the new budget, now's the time to start to try and put something in place.
You can direct me at some point here, maybe in the October meetings, to put aside some money for that kind of contribution. It may not come to pass, but we're ready, there's a place in the budget for it. Okay.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
So, on the spending side, we've identified the personnel over the last four years and where we would be in FY '25, based on the revenue numbers that I projected earlier. The one thing I want to point out, and to help soften the impact annually of what we've been talking about, the pension issues, look on page seven, there's a hard black line about a middle, midway through that chart, and that's purposeful. Because we have been working diligently, while our pension obligations have been rising, our public indebtedness has been falling. And we intend to see that get, at the end of the next five fiscal years, back to just the pension, or excuse me, just the public obligation for the bonds for this fire station. That takes 1.4, 1.5 million dollars out of some bondholder's pocket and puts it into our general fund. And this is, we've been doing this quietly, we haven't made a big deal out of it, a lot of public bodies are going further into debt, we've been buying down our debt in our budgets for the last five years, and I'm happy with that, and I hope you see what's within reach here. And this, frankly, is not calculated in that ugly curve, because future councils can decide to borrow more money. But, you know, I think it is calculated in terms of next year, and we will do it every year after that, and then you'll start to see some difference. I should also mention that we have applied for a number of grants, including another SAFER grant, which was, the first one was to help with the hiring of firefighter paramedics, and we are looking to do that again for Station 4, and the application was filed in winter, Mike, and we should be hearing, hopefully by October, when we meet again. So, as far as the general obligations, and which includes our general operating fund, that's really all I have prepared to show you tonight. One thing I will note, there is in this budget, as it is proposed to you here, a very conceptual budget, a million-dollar transfer from the city's reserve or fund balance to the capital projects fund. If you look on page nine, toward the bottom, you see that, to rev up our annual street maintenance program from two and a half to three and a half, that would be an historic high for the city of DeKalb. And another 500,000 from the fund balance to help with the purchase of the four dump trucks, we've talked about that here a number of times, and we've had, obviously, a spending resolution to get our interests known so that we're not paying more later in the year. And that's for the public works department. Now, I did put something at your table, Mayor Barnes had asked me what would it look like if we were to take 2 million out of the fund balance and put it towards streets, which would come to a total of 4.5 million for the next year. And at your places, you will see a couple of sheets that are stapled together. At the bottom, it says 4,399,736, you see that?
No.
See that? So, that's about 100,000 short of 4.5, and the other 100,000 would be for engineering that goes into the planning and the construction supervision for our roads. And if that was the council's pleasure, and I know there are a couple council members who aren't here tonight who had spoken strongly about that, this would, this would cover, there's a map attached that looks something like this, it would cover three nodes, I guess, that we've been pecking at. One is the Knowles, and we had some concern with where we left off the last time and didn't continue this year, and so that, Mike, as you look down there in the bottom, that's the add-on, it says Knowles Avenue South, and then it also picks up some of the streets that people had said were just next door, just missed the cut. And then also, we see Tilton Park getting much closer to having the streets brought up to the average or better. And then also, over in the vicinity of Russell Road and north of Lucinda, there are a lot of little side streets that are really seriously deteriorated, and just like in the Knowles and also over in Tilton Park, and those would be picked up as we're going to be in the area doing Lucinda next summer. So, that was the thinking behind it. Zach Gill's here tonight, and be happy to speak to that if you want more detail on it.
So, a couple things, since we're talking about roads, came in to get a coffee on Annie Glidden, Annie Glidden on the underpass, both lanes are open, looks great.
Man, it looks good.
Uh-huh. Very nice.
It feels good.
Now, so some history on it.
That was Zach Gill unleashed.
So, what did we spend last year on roads? Ballpark, was it?
Two and a half.
Two and a half this year we spent?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Going to three and a half or more.
So, when do we talk about that amount? Because those are big increases.
Now, I'd like to hear what you think.
Because to me, that, I recognize we've got an issue, we can't boil the ocean in one or two years, we've got a lot of roads that need to be fixed. And meanwhile, out of one side, we've got this pension issue that we're dealing with, which is driving reserves down, and we've got roads that are another big bubble, that's a spend. I'm all for adding more to the road budget, but I don't know that I'm supportive of going to 3.5 million, let alone 4.5 million. You know, I think that's a long-term fix, it's taken a long time to get here. This past weekend, we went out to Galena, and you looked and drove on a lot of roads in smaller towns. And, you know, we see what we have, but you get out there, and there's a lot of communities that have really, really serious trouble with roads. And I'm not discounting what we have, we have roads, but what I can tell you is this, in Galena, there were multiple sides of the street that only, that had no curb or gutter, or that had one curb or gutter. And my only point in that is, is I think it's a path we need to go on, but I think it's a longer-term fix, rather than going heavy into it and depleting our reserves at a time when we see reserves are going down to support pension obligation. Meanwhile, we've got a lot of other things going on that are developing that we're still trying to figure out. So, I wasn't sure how to go about that, but I thought I would put that out there, because I think those are, those are big changes, to me.
Alderman Verberk.
Well, I thank you for this, this is in direct response to those that I serve, without question, that at some point, and I understand where you're coming from with regard to this large amount, but it's been made very clear to me that this is a priority. So, to Alderman Perkins' point, how do we do this within our means so that we're not impacting our fund balance? In other words, how can we overcome our investment today from our fund balance in a more of a longer-term plan so that we do... a longer-term plan so that we do have our rainy day fund? But again, thank you for this suggestion, because, and I know that you've heard from those I serve as well, that people are ready to invest, period, in our streets.
If you look at the bottom of page eight, you can see what happens with the fund balance, just having to do with the two factors, the state pension issues and also the larger transfer out, if you look at that line item toward the bottom. And this particular chart on page eight just takes into account the 3 and 1/2 million, the 1 million transfer from the balance. And what you don't see, because there's just not enough room on a page, FY '30, remember again, some of the, about 1.4 million of the debt service goes off, and so we could be doing some more. But until that point, if we do 1 million or 2 million, doesn't matter, we're not going to be able to do that every year until the end of the decade. So that's probably it. And then we're back to 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2. And we have enough revenue to do that, but there's not, beyond where we are now, and there are no new taxes proposed in this budget, that's where we are.
I will say, I know we're working hard to get our tax bills down, because I love Galena, but that's not who we are trying to match up with. We're looking more at the Fox Valley as to people who might move here for jobs or whatever. And that tax bill is very important, but at the same time, I'll head east, and I'm like, I got lost in Naperville. I didn't find one bad street. I know we're not Naperville, but at the same time, those are the people that might come looking to start moving west for new jobs here. And so I just feel that while our tax bills reflect who we are, I think when you drive down our city streets, and if you go from one rocky pothole street to the next, to the next, to the next in one part of town, it also says, like, this town looks terrible. Are they going to make it? Are they going to die? So I'm not sure what the number is particularly, but I would squeeze every last penny that we could out of the budget to help also help that part of DeKalb's reputation or what people think of us, and not just the tax bills. Anybody else?
So if I took a straw poll right now.
So is that clear?
So there are five out of eight, and we're not going to keep doing, I mean, we're on to other things at the next business meetings that we have over the next month and a half, and then we're back to something like this in October. So, and I don't want to prepare two budgets, but this is a slice of it. It's not everything. There are a number of changes that have to be made, just in some of the background analysis, but where would I, where would most of you fall? How many of you would like to see more than 1 million taken out of the fund reserve at this point for 2025?
Can I?
One, two.
Can I? See, my thing is this, and like I said, I'm trying to get all these moving parts.
We're kind of casual here tonight.
Okay, cool, cool. By the way, I like the little stuff.
The casual.
But what, my thing is this, and like I said, there's so many moving parts with all this, and nobody in this room besides you and a few others understand it 100%. So let's get that out there right now. But I just feel like when we start doing things like that, like trying to squeeze everything out the turnip, you know, then we start having to try to find money elsewhere to help other situations, if that makes sense. And I think the only thing that I'm worried about is in the future, you know, like these taxes, they, you know, I'm starting to understand them, you know, 90% now, you know, and I just feel like when we start doing things of this nature, we always try to allocate money or take money out here and allocate it there, but it's kind of like robbing Peter to pay Paul, if that makes sense, right? And I just don't want somehow, some way later, you know, just falling on taxpayers in some type of way, because it seems like that's what always happens. So yes, I do want streets. We all do. I'm, you know, I'm tired of my, you know, BMW in potholes. I am. But I just, I guess I just want to really just figure out a way where it just doesn't hurt, if that makes sense.
It does. So I think you have to put this in a broader context. We've been talking about what can we do this year, and what did we do last year, and what can we do next year? Really, if you look at this from 2000, there were about 10 to 12 years where the council voted less than 750,000 a year, and that wasn't even for the major arterials. One of the first things this council wanted to do in 2019 is aim to North First, or First and Seventh, not just North, but also South, and Taylor Street, because they had, they were so bad, there was no patching that could be done along the curb lines and in other ways. And that ate up what otherwise would have gone into the neighborhoods. And we've been playing catch-up now, but pretty aggressively, but it's not enough. So I see, I mean, you could sell me on both sides, and I think about this all the time, and I talk to our staff about this all the time. I think we have to do the million, for sure. That's why I proposed it to you. The 2 million is, as, I'm trying to distance, step out of my own skin here and realize that I'm living on a street that's probably average. I'm not living on a street in these yellow shaded areas which are failed, not failing, failed. So I, we can't, we have to do a little more to get that. Now, the weather and the freeze cycle and future dilemmas, who knows what happens, national economy and all the rest of that, are all unknowns, but you would get to a point where most all the town would have reached average. That makes, that's close. Am I right, Mr. Gill? Or not failing, at least, or out of the failing category?
Yes, those zones are concentrated around patches of failing. Now, not that every inch of the road in there is completely failed, but it would take care of large blocks of failing concentrated within zones, as well in picking up stuff that is by and large also approaching failing, getting into the poor rating. So yeah, those are some zones. Yes, you would definitely take, we've got some real, you know, if you look at the citywide map, you've got some real blight, so to speak, as far as road, and then that would alleviate a lot of those zones, yeah.
Alderman Verbrick.
Ward six has streets of powder, so again, I support the streets repairs total as published, 4.399, but on the other end, I would like to be able to replenish our fund balance. I don't know what that means, if that's a three-year, or, and how can we get that replenished? And how can we keep up the work on our streets? And, you know, without taxing everyone beyond our means, right? I think that's the magic formula we're looking for. So help us achieve that formula.
Yeah, and fiscal prudence every year, I mean, as we've talked, we've been able to give back a little bit. The non-personnel item, line items are mostly flatlined this year, as you can see by the numbers in front of you. The fund balance was accruing dramatically. We came out of COVID stronger than anybody predicted and budgeted lower out of caution and did better, so our fund balance is higher. And we haven't been frivolous about spending that in any manner, shape, or form. So you can see what happens with the fund balance, and I guess it's really a council call. 25% is our mantra of fund balance as a percent of annual expenditures, and obviously that should be going up a little bit, because expenditures are going to go up a little bit. But is it, should it be 40? You can make your own policy. Replenishing it happens on an annual basis. It doesn't happen, we don't get a windfall, we don't get the, I don't think you want me to go to the track or anything like that, that would not be prudent, but we need to build it slowly, incrementally, which is about what we've been doing on the road repair. But other than public safety, what is the next highest concern of people in the city of DeKalb? What do you hear the most about?
Roads.
Roads.
Yep.
So I guess, you know, you made a great point, Alderman Perkins, but other person, Larson, I'm with you. I agree with you, you know, like you said, Naperville is beautiful. I just love riding down, you know, smooth streets, and at some point, you know, we do deserve better here in DeKalb, but like I said, I'm just scared. I'm just worried that we'll start just picking money and somehow it'll fall on taxpayers, but I know you're the man for the job. You'll figure it out.
Mike, first, Alderman Verbrick.
Yeah, just at one point, you know, we're growing business and industry, we're growing E A V, but yet, those, to Alderman Perkins' frustration, all of those additional dollars flowing into our region are being captured by our pension obligations, which we do owe. We do need to satisfy those obligations. A deal's a deal. But at what point, as we continue to grow business and industry, what will be that break-even point? When can we start taking some of those dollars and applying it to streets and other things that our city needs? That's, I guess, that point where I just feel like, yes, we need to pay back our pensions, but yet at what point do we, are we able to make these streets that are powder into streets again?
Right.
Alderman Perkins, do you have a response?
Just so you're clear on where I'm at, to me, I don't think we should go over 3 million dollars for streets. That's my number. It's an increase of, we were at 2 and 1/2 last year, and we're increasing it. We recognize there's a problem, taking it to 3 million, but taking it to 4 and plus that, I think it's a long-term problem that's going to take us a long time to fix, and not that there isn't a need, there's certainly a need, but I'd rather do something sustainable for a longer period of time.
The only, I'm sorry.
Alderman Walker.
Like, the only issue that I have with that is, you know, because I'm in everybody's ward, and everybody in every, in all the seven wards, they complain about streets. So yeah, I agree with what you're saying, but it's like, they have to get fixed. Like, we can't just keep, like, we have to figure it out. We can't just keep kicking the ball down the street, because as last agenda we had, when you start kicking things down the street, they always come back to haunt you later. So I just want to figure out a way where, you know, we can get these streets done, so, but you know.
Okay. Unless.
All of the work only gets more expensive over time. None of this work gets less expensive to perform. So the more that we can perform today, the better off we'll be over the long run.
Okay, and I think just to wrap up, I had been talking to either city manager or the mayor, if our pension liabilities were like, we would have it if we put this million dollars in. But what our liability is, that we're going to have to come up with something, because we've already talked, there's no way, scrimping, saving, doing everything in there, that we're going to come up with this current tax, or this pension liability. So to me, I'm almost like, not like, oh, I've got a credit card bill, I might also make it bigger, but it's like, let's do something that we can fix now, and yes, we'll have another million, but we have like 980, 90 million, I think, to take that and put it into streets. So, but I don't think we're going to solve this here. Do you have the information you need on this?
I have.
Are we crystal clear?
Yeah, I mean, a bear consensus is in favor of going the whole nine yards to the 4 and 1/2, and we have three members absent. Well, I'll just bring this back. I'll certainly present, I'll focus on this in the next presentation, and we'll have, hopefully, a little more information by then where we are.
And I would like to hear from the Finance Advisory Committee, you know, as that works out. I understand our future schedule, but it's important to me to hear your feelings on this and what you're hearing from those we serve.
And then were you done for the night? Was this?
I'm done. You may not be done.
Hey, I kind of got a question, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I just want some clarity. So the Amazon building, you know, people at work are asking me this one. So are we, it's not occupied, but we still are receiving funds from that building, right?
Yeah, so how it works is, when a building's under construction, the assessment is, could just be the farmland assessment from before the construction started. But once a temporary occupancy, or final occupancy, I should say, has been issued by the building department, even if the building remains unoccupied for a year or two, whatever, the assessor then values that property as built, and it's the full, whatever the market rates are for that type of property and that type of building and so forth. So we get valuation from that. Now, the Board of Appeals may be approached by the company if it remains vacant for a while. The one thing that the Board, the County Board of Appeals, it's not a City Board of Appeals, has shown some consideration for is if it's actually never been occupied and it just remains vacant, and so they may shave that assessor's valuation, but it's not, it's not going to go back to farmland or something, yeah, unbilled.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I would take a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, second.
Alderman Verbrick made the motion. Alderman Walker seconded. Roll call? Do we, or just?
You can do a voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Please adjourn.
Thank you.